Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mike Gully, we got a quorum tonight, and John's back for the evening. I appreciate him being here tonight.
I got that.
Yep. We're always going to play the Welcome Back Potter theme song, but we'll forego that to proceed on here. All right, we need to approve the regular, oh, I want to say hi to all the Boy Scouts who are, Boy Scouts, Scouts, Scouts that are with us this evening. Hopefully, we can put on a good show for you this evening. Right Darren, I want you to get bored tonight.
He's our judge.
Yeah, I was gonna say, who's the judge about?
All right. Regular agenda, Brenton, you had a couple of mods you wanted to make on that?
Just one addition, which would be between agendas thirteen and fourteen, we'll do a purchase of Schulte RDX 117 snow blower.
Okay, we'll call it thirteen A then there.
Yeah, you can say thirteen here.
Okay.
Want you to approve the agenda with said change?
Okay, Brenton makes the motion, Chelsea does a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, agenda's approved. Consent agenda.
Okay, minutes.
That's not.
Sorry, sorry, never mind.
You're just in a hurry to get through this scenario.
I'm in a hurry.
All right, we'll proceed with four now. Have we got any questions on it, though, on the consent agenda? Brenton, anything on there that we should pay a little bit more heed to? I didn't see anything, but.
No, the only thing, as a reminder, pretty much all, majority of the expenditures have been recorded. There's a few that we've had invoices for, they'll be trapped here hitting two thousand thirteen. However, we haven't gotten a piece of equipment, for example, like the lawnmower or new mower for Bullock Works. So when they, when we get that, we cut the check, but it'll be, it'll hit the two thousand nineteen budget.
Okay.
So you'll have a good, this gives you a good idea how we ended the year, but there's still some moving parts here. I see that over the next few months as those final, those dollars are closed out. P-card purchases are final, you know, recorded, things like that, so.
Okay.
Just giving you a heads up about that.
Can I make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Okay, Chelsea makes a motion.
Second.
Chelsea does a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion approved. All right, now we'll move on to the city council. Meeting minutes. Okay. Anybody see any corrections or additions we permitted, we'd had?
No, good, motion approved.
Brian makes a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, Chelsea does a second, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion approved. So let's get this to the public comment part of the show here. I was gonna see if Darren and Gully wanted to get up and say something about the scouting program for us tonight.
Mayor, members of council, we appreciate scouts on two seventy-four, appreciate the opportunity to come in and, and see the workings of the city of Horace's council. We're working on the citizenship of the community badge, just kind of a long badge, eagle required badge, it takes us about probably two to three months to get through that badge. One of them is coming to see how call of order, all your stuff that goes on at the city council, those type of things. And the second probably major requirement is we have to do eight hours of community service for an organization. So they'll look at the Salvation Army Lions or something like that to complete that merit badge. So again, we appreciate you letting us come and partake.
Thank you, I appreciate you guys coming out.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else want to make any comments, public? Going once, going twice? All right, we'll move on then to number seven here, audit agreement. Brenton.
Okay, what you see before you is a proposal from Aid Bailey. This is a different firm that is proposing to do the audit. We did not seek a proposal from the previous auditor, we're real thrilled with the, how it was done in the past. So what you see before you is a proposal, they do cover a couple of years or different audits, so three different audits. The first one will be a two-year audit, so it'll cover two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen. What, why you see a range, and that would be on the fourth page towards the very bottom. They gave a range because they don't know what they're getting into. They have an idea, we've been working with them on an on-call basis, so when we have questions, proper accounting or bookkeeping measures, different things from a government perspective. We've been bouncing those off of them, but until they start getting in, diving into our books, all that, they, they really, they're giving you an estimate for that range.
Because they've never audited our books prior, I don't believe that I remember, so.
Also, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, obviously being a two-year audit, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty-one, it would drop down in cost a little bit because that would be looking at the audit annually. They still have to go through different measures like onsite review, going through quite a few different transactions and purchases, things like that. So it's a substantial amount. It's also a different level of audit that we've had done in the past. Our past audit fell within the ten to fifteen thousand dollar range. This is a more in-depth review of our finances and what's going on with the city. Overall timeline, I know they would like to be able to come in and do their onsite work and pretty much have the preliminary review of the audit done kind of by end of June, into July. Reason why is because then those entities that are on July one to June thirtieth fiscal year, they start getting into working with those groups. So like school districts or state, people that follow a state calendar year. So that's their timeline, they would like to tackle it within that timeframe. I really would be looking at them not getting here until probably around May at the earliest.
So they would do it in May?
May-June timeframe, May to June timeframe is when we really would reasonably expect them to be onsite. Part of the reason behind that is so that way we have a chance for Becky to get back, for get back settled in with her role and do a prep work for the audit to help make their lives easier and help keep our costs down. So we do have to do an audit at least every two years. Our overall goal was to switch to an angle audit in two thousand nineteen, but we chose not to do that yet because we were going through a restructuring of how we account for our finances. Our charter accounts, sort of the different billing line items, that changed also. And we wanted to give time for that to settle in place before we went through an audit. That's, that's why we're at two-year. After that, we plan on going to one-year, and the reason why is just so much more activity happening in Horace. The amount of money coming in, coming out that the city is experiencing is significantly more than what we've had two, three, five years ago. So that's why we're looking at angle audit, so if we do have any issues, we're able to respond and correct those issues quicker, so they don't continue. If you have any questions, I'd say answer them.
I think about the only thing I was gonna add to that is we might want to reach out to the park board, let them know that we're doing, that they could probably use the same firm to go audit the books, too.
And I haven't been able to get in touch with the park board yet, but I'll discuss that with their finance director and see, at least inform them who we're working with.
Yep.
If you guys approve this.
No, I mean, we've been talking about this, so we need to.
So we need to do.
Yeah, this is what we need to do, so.
The reasonable cost for considering what we're doing, so.
We've researched this fairly well, I think.
One, one thing that we would do different, too, is to, historically, we've hit just a general fund to cover costs of audit. Our plan would be, since this is a more substantial amount, general fund would cover a good portion of this. But the other utilities like water, sewer, and enterprise funds, they have activity, so they should be chipping in with the audit, too. So our plan is to have water cover some of the, the water fund to cover some of the audit costs, sewer to cover some of it, highway to cover some of it, and general fund. That makes up the lion's share of our expenses, but we do intend to spread that cost out.
All right, anybody got any other questions? I think we've all, we talked about this.
This was on the new budget for two thousand twenty?
Yes.
Yeah, we've been talking about this for probably a year and a half now, just to kind of come up with what plan that we're gonna use to, for this next audit cycle and then get into an annual basis, because like you said, we're running a lot more money through the books here. We need to make sure we don't, we keep track of it on yearly basis with an audit, so.
So I'll make a motion to approve the quote for Aid Bailey to be our audit.
I'll second that. Okay, you can be a second. All right, I'll roll call this one. John?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
All right, so it's unanimous, so it passes. All right, so let's get this in the books.
All of them.
Okay. All right, Lucas, you're up here on a second reading.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. If you will recall, a couple of years ago, we had an interesting property to the south of here where we did a variance, conditionally used permits, and a zoning ordinance, the All American Property, which is on blocks four and five, block one of Gorgor Edition. So the city council approved the variance for them to have their plumbing, shop and yard there, approved a conditionally used permit, and approved first reading of the zoning ordinance. However, we never did a second reading of that, and so tonight would just be a second reading to zone that property to C-three, General Commercial District.
So there's no changes to the ordinance from then?
No change, we just never did the second reading, we just got this. And the reason that it's coming up now is Barrett received a building permits application to verify what the zoning designation was. It wasn't there because we couldn't even find it before.
I take it no issues with the first greeting?
It was approved.
Trying to have me go back to two thousand seventeen.
It was approved, I'm not gonna say there were issues.
Being nothing's changed with that.
Nothing pending, I mean, with approval or.
Correct.
Any other questions, guys, or accept the motion?
There was no issue, and again, maybe we covered this before, but there was no issue from planning and zoning for making this change. I know this was.
Well, it's not making a change to anything, it's just giving it a zoning designation.
It's just designated, it's confirming the designation of how it's being used from the previous.
And they did, they matched what was used to the properties to the, to the west.
Correct.
Right.
Okay, all right.
And so it's.
Three years ago, forgot.
Yeah.
I'm also in the same way.
I'll second.
Dave makes a motion, John does a second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, passes, yeah, so we'll finish the paperwork here. Lucas? All right, number nine, PUD first reading.
Hi, Mayor, I think what we're gonna do, I'm gonna present it, and then if you have any questions about the final plan agreement, Lucas is on hand, answers his questions for it.
Sounds good.
So for Greeley PUD, staff receiving the application for a zoning change from C-one Neighborhood Commercial to Plan Unit Development for the properties displayed on the location map on the screen before you. The proposed legal language for the zoning change is based on a proposed plat titled Greeley Edition, which will be heard at, in the future. A copy of the preliminary plat document is included in your packet that I provided for you for your review. The application is requesting this entitlement to allow for the construction of two mixed-use buildings that would provide commercial land uses on the first floor and sixty-four multi-unit residential units on floors two through four that would otherwise not be permitted in the C-two zoning commercial district. So the applicant is proposing the following changes to the C-one Neighborhood Commercial zoning requirements. To allow for fifty additional multifamily units, reduce accessory structure setbacks, reduction of sixty parking stalls to allow for parking in the side yard. No parking bumpers required, a reduction of two hundred twenty-six plant units, no interior landscaping required, parking lot perimeter, drive house not recorded to screen, no street trees required. Directory signage, ten square feet or less, identification signs, one per business, thirty square feet less than what is required. For more information, please see the PUD final plan that's attached with the report. So staff would also like to make the commission aware that there were some minor revisions and some of the revisions to the PUD final plan language after the planning commission that were to add that each building was limited to thirty-two living units per building and illumination requirements. I guess I would add a further addition to that language, instead of requiring dimming the illumination, that we give it some sort of parameter or metric to follow. The standard best management practice right now is the unit of nits, so I would recommend five thousand nits between the hours of five AM to eleven PM and then two hundred fifty nits from eleven oh one PM to four fifty-nine AM. Also regarding land dedication, the development proposes a public plaza dedication of approximately fifteen thousand square feet for future proposal lot two. Seven thousand seven hundred ten square feet of this lot will be required by the Land Use Ordinance Section seventeen point eight-ten. An additional seven thousand two hundred ninety square feet will be purchased by the city of Horus through a purchase agreement. In addition, the applicant has agreed to pay for the following on the proposed lot two. Access drive portions that are located on the lot, parking stall portions that are located on the lot, installation of electric lines running from the building to the plaza along with meters and outlets, and stamped concrete floor for the plaza facility. As required by the Land Use Ordinance, property owner notifications were sent out within hundred feet of the properties. To date, no comments have been received. Also, on January fourteenth, the planning commission approved of this application with five additional conditions. Those conditions are listed in your staff report. Also, the applicant has requested staff to entertain a parking study to amend the conditions of approval. And the applicant suggested that with the use of a computer model to provide a parking study, that they identified that the parking demand would never exceed a hundred and ninety-five stalls, so they are asking for approval of this application with the planning commission's recommendations with the exception of the two hundred and seventeen parking stalls.
Is that reduction based on other similar buildings in other communities, or how, what model did they use for that?
I have Brian Kunnafsky on stand, or with us tonight, if you have more specific questions for him about that study.
I mean, that's a pretty significant reduction in the overall parking, but you know, if, if the model matches, you know, similar type of buildings with expected occupancy, then that, you know, could make sense. So I guess that's, that's a question. Do we have any more detail on that?
Yeah.
Can you go to the mic, Tony? Yeah.
Do you want to do that now?
It's up to you.
I guess we can, so, all right, well, let's open it up for a public meeting, you don't have it listed on the sheet here, that's why I just.
It's a public hearing.
Yeah.
First reading, this will be an ordinance.
And if you want, I do have a recommendation, just so that we meet the North Dakota Century Code requirements, that we're making our decision based on conditions. I have two recommendations before you tonight. A is the recommendation made by the planning commission with the seven conditions, and then B on the bottom is the recommendation by staff that removes the requirement for the two hundred and seventeen parking stalls.
Or it's not necessarily removal, it's just applying a different set of rules for this PUD.
Correct, so the city commission does have the flexibility to either accept the full recommendation of the planning commission or part of, or none at all.
Right.
So I can just get started here. I'm Tony Wolf with Zurbick Architects, on behalf of Epic Companies. We pulled together the parking study based on the Urban Land Institute's shared parking, which is actually in your ordinances. And what that does is it, you know, a mixed-use building is really leveraging, leveraging the land to be a twenty-four-hour facility. It's not just daytime for commercial, not just evening for residential, it's really mixing the two, right? So when you're mixing the two and using the land to its best possible use, what you end up with is times a day when the apartments are full, times a day when the commercial's full, and the overlapping time in between. So what the Urban Land Use Manual does is it, it really gives a percentage of the time throughout the day that the, the buildings use for certain occupancy. So it's really not totally discounting the residential during the day, we're still counting sixty-five percent, I think is the lowest we got to. So we're still counting sixty-five percent of the, the parking requirements for residential during that time. So, and commercial likewise, you know, restaurants, they recognize are staying open till maybe midnight, so there's a portion of parking for those. You can advance the slide one. So really, what we'll do today is we'll kind of just walk through the, what we proposed, the parking study in general, and how we got to that number. So this is the parking plan that you guys all have seen. Advance one more here. So this is, this is the study, and it's really kind of hard to see there, but there's certain times of day when it goes up and down based on the occupancy. So you can see in the mornings and the evenings, there's quite a bit less parking, and really, it's, it's during like the seven to eight o'clock hour that it starts to really ramp up and, and the buildings buzzing, so to speak. So, next slide, so.
And does that, there's underground parking planned for this as well, right?
There is.
So that, that number does include the underground parking as well as surface parking?
Correct, yeah, a hundred ninety-five total parking.
Okay.
The underground parking services more the apartments?
Just the apartments.
Just the apartments.
Right, correct. And the underground parking that we have provided is actually less than the minimum required with this model for residential. So we're actually supplementing that with surface parking, even at the lowest number that we're providing for residential. So this methodology, number one, you just, basically you get all your types of spaces or different uses, square footages, units, and you can gather all that information. Step two, if you want, click one. Basically, there's the chart that takes you to, or lists out all these different uses, and then there's a weekday and a weekend usage. So, and there's just basically different base numbers where you start. So at, this is at a hundred percent, this is what they would require you for those uses per thousand square feet or per year, per residential unit. And then if you click one more, then what we do from there, you take that times a multiplier for the time of day that we're modeling. So that's where that, that chart really kind of combines these two and, and just kind of distills that information. So you can click to the next slide. This is a little bit more graphic, graphically showing what we're looking at. So gray, I believe here is, can I read it here, but that's residential, yeah. So you can see even at the, the peak of the day, when most people, or not most, but a lot of people are out at their jobs or school or what, what have you, there's still quite a bit of parking set aside for residential. And then there's all these different other uses for community shopping centers, yellow, the orange is a restaurant. This is just kind of a model showing what we kind of, what, what Epic Companies typically sees in a building of theirs. There's some office-based medical and a bank, you know, so you can see where, you know, banking hours, the green is, you know, in that nine to five range, otherwise, they're just not there. It's the reality of a bank. And that's really what we're trying to get down to, is that there's certain hours when you will have people there, and there's certain hours when certain spaces won't. And your typical ordinances are great for a single occupancy building where you know that these people are gonna be occupying this building for this amount, you know, and you can, you can identify that, but for a mixed-use building, to say you have to provide all those parking stalls when really you don't have the need for them, is kind of what we're, we're getting at here. So the total parking we have is a hundred ninety-five, we actually provided enough to meet our peak time demand. If you look at the average, at a hundred and sixty, we're quite a bit above that, but we kind of recognize that there's really no on-street parking to supplement here, off-street parking.
The only caveat I would say is because there's a mixed-use public space in the area, that if there's a special event, that that parking demand may increase on a special, but it would be a special event kind of scenario.
Right.
Rather than a normal day-to-day.
Right, exactly. You know, and there's, there's certainly some opportunities for working with, you know, whoever the tenants are there, you know, we're doing a street fair or something, come out and, you know, display at the street fair. So you, then you kind of trade off, right? You trade off the people.
Well, then, if you as a city, you should be more apt to work with that, rather than building these street parking lots that you never use.
But we can plan for those events.
Right.
We can plan for those events and make special arrangements.
It's kind of.
Other parking areas.
It's kind of like the old saying, you don't design your church for Easter Monday, or Easter Sunday, you know.
Exactly.
And Christmas. You design it for your, you know, more than your average, but certainly your peak time, so. Click on the next one. So then we get a couple of case studies. This is Pioneer Place downtown West Fargo. You can see there, we provided, well, I guess that wasn't our project, but Epic has about a hundred and twelve between the diagonal parking out front that they redid, off-street parking and basement parking. And their peak demand is a hundred and forty-five. Now there, they do have some flexibility because they have off-street parking within the vicinity, but their average is a hundred and fourteen. So you know, they're, they're kind of right in that average range, right? And I think they're finding that when they meet that average, they're kind of in the sweet spot, there's times when people, you know, you'll have to park a little further away, but for the most part, most of the time, they're, they're meeting their parking requirements. Click to the next slide, again, Shion Plaza, just on the street from that, they had about a hundred and thirty-one spots. Now their peak is quite a bit higher, because they have quite a bit of, their whole second floor is office space. Oh, and third, sorry, yeah, second and third is office space, and then they have the VFW on the main level. But you can see, if you just distill it down to kind of the average, the hundred and fifty-six. Again, off-street parking helps a lot, or on-street parking, rather, helps a lot with that. And again, you can just kind of see the ebbs and flows during the day, the weekdays on top, weekends on the bottom with those charts. So, yeah, weekdays is where your peak is, and that's right around that eight, ten, eight to ten o'clock timeframe, noon, because there's a restaurant in there, so. If you click the next slide, Block E, now this is, so the last three buildings I've shown you are, were all urban mixed-use, downtown mixed-use zoning where you don't require to have any parking, but obviously developer knows that in order to have the building functioning, they need to have parking. So they totally understand that, and they're just trying to distill it down to what we actually need. So this project was unique because Eighth Street and Morehead and Main Avenue Morehead, neither have parking on them. So we supplemented with a parking lot, and what we found was we have seventy-eight spots on grade and below the building, and our average is around fifty-three, and our peak is around that eighty-three. So we're really kind of right in that sweet spot, right? I mean, that's what we're trying to distill down, and I think they found that, you know, they, they weren't necessarily using this, this manual, and they kind of had their own formula, and what they're finding is that this manual really backs up their formula and their understanding of their parking needs. And just that you don't need to provide all the parking required by the city ordinance, because it's just overlapping times again, so.
And this has been sufficient for Block E at this point, as far as you know?
Yeah. Next slide. Boulevard Square, just, now, so the last two, I want to show you, this is, this is what hap, this is what, this project was done with the full parking requirements of the city ordinance. And what they're finding is that at night, when Pub West is open, the north lot's empty. And during the day, when they have office space on the north building, the Pub West parking area is empty. And they really don't want to duplicate that, because it's just, it's more parking they need, you're not really using the lot to the best possible, the best possible potential, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. So, so that's what they want to avoid doing that again. So here we have three hundred and thirty-four parking stalls accounting for every occupancy all the time, a hundred percent full. And what, that, the average is around two hundred, and the peak is at two eighty-two, so even at the peak, we're below, you know, with this model, what the city ordinances would recommend. So you can click the next one, again Beaver Ridge, mine, this one was one of the first ones that they did, and same thing, a hundred fifty-nine stalls. Now this one's a little bit closer on the peak, a hundred forty-four, because there's quite a bit of, they've got Jimmy John's and the spicy pie, you know, there's quite a bit of restaurant in that building. But even at the average, then we go look at that again, and we're at one oh eight. So again, more parking than really what is needed, which is really the benefit of PUD when you're doing a mixed-use building, to really just mesh the two occupancies together. Next slide, please. Oh, that was it. Yeah.
So in essence, this model is a refinement of the other buildings that you put up to better match from the lessons learned, so to speak.
Correct, yep. Yeah, I think, again, those last two were the very first two buildings, and then they started kind of getting their, their footing and really feeling out what their parking needs are. And again, up till now, we've, they've been kind of working on, this is really where we feel like we need to be, and now this really backs up that information that, yeah, this is where you need to be because you don't need to be providing a hundred percent of the occupancies a hundred percent of the time.
So for the Greeley and the Boulevard, they have, the Greeley has a little bit more commercial and just about the same residential, but the peaks are a lot, are about a hundred parking units different.
Yeah, so it really, you know, this, the Greeley model is just a model, that's all it is, that's all we can provide at this point. And I think the, the feeling is that there'll be more. there'll be more commercial tenants, retail tenants, less office. Yeah, restaurants and, and less office space. Because really where you're seeing the peaks on Boulevard Square are during the middle of the day when you have the restaurants, or, you know, they have lunchtime, and they have their patrons coming in. And then you also have your office space, which is full. You know, that whole north building there is almost all office and restaurant. So, you know, it really, it's a balancing act in trying to figure where you're at overall. So that's, that's why you see such a big difference there. And I think, again, Boulevard Square is such an early-on project, but now they're seeing a little bit more of the commercial side, or the retail side on their projects.
So the only thing I was noticing is that on the ordinance document, we still have the 217, so I guess that's the question barrier. Are we approving the PUD document that's here, or the ordinance, because those are, two are different?
The PUD ordinance is the new zoning designation that replaces the C1 zoning designation. So you're approving of the ordinance.
So the document, the document, this, this ordinance document that I'm showing here, that's old, that this is what would be replacing that?
Right. You're approving of a zoning change based on this document.
I have a question. How many total spots are you providing?
195.
What happened to the original 202 that you were suggesting?
So that was a calculation error. We had, for some, somewhere along the line, we had 16 extras. So you actually, if you go back to those other documents and you add the numbers, they don't add up to that 202.
Oh, you lost, you forgot to take your shoes off.
Yeah, exactly. So that, that was, that was a calculation error. If we, if we had space for 16 more, we provide space for 16 more. But that back triangle is for our retention and...
You guys got any other questions or concerns?
I think, you know, you guys have done a few of these, so you understand what you're doing. But if there were to be parking issues, do you have maybe an option of how you would handle them, or?
I think at this point, it would end up having to be some kind of underground water retention with parking over the top of it, to, to take care of some of that back triangle area, where we've got the open pond right now.
You know, just thinking if, if there were to be somebody that really wanted to take a bunch of it for office space, and then try, and, you know, comparing it to Boulevard, there could potentially be issues and...
Yep. That would be, that would have to be the thing that was weighed if we, Adam, like you said, office, you know, somebody with a lot of cubicle-type call center or something like that, we'd definitely have to make provisions for that.
Thanks.
Anybody else have a question?
Are we, is that just parking questions, or?
There was two on there, right? There were two of them that you wanted to...
Conditions? Oh, the staff-related suggestions?
The recommendations that you had there.
Yeah, they're not listed on here, but they would be 32 units per building. And then in terms of the LED signage, 5,000 nets from the hours of 3:00 to 11:00 a.m., 250 nets from 11:01 p.m. to 4:59 a.m. I could certainly add those on if you'd like.
32 to 33, great.
32 per building, 64 per building.
But bringing it up to 30.
Yeah, so if anybody's got any, I didn't ask them. Go ahead. Yeah, anybody's got any comments that they want to make on this, go ahead.
There's probably a question for you guys. So I know, like, renter, when you rent a property, sometimes you got to pay extra for garage and underground parking. So is that included in the rent? Because I could see more surface parking if it's, you know, a couple hundred dollars extra.
You know, we don't ever have any underground parking left over. And, and a lot of times we do charge more for that as an extra fee. But generally speaking, at 60 bucks, people say, "I want to be underground," that type of thing.
Okay. Anybody else got any other comments they want to make on it? Okay. Lucas, you got anything you want to add on to that, or comment?
Your two options are here, right? Pick one. But I mean, basically, council for, just so you guys know, tonight is just the first reading. So, I mean, you can do your first reading tonight, table it, or, you know, it's solely up to you. And we can always change stuff before your second reading. This PUD agreement is an ordinance, so I, I really stress the importance of, of this PUD agreement with the city council, with the developer, the planning commission obviously made their recommendations on there, knowing that this is going to be basically a zoning district of the city that applies to that parcel. So just make sure that, that you are okay with, with the PUD agreement itself, and with the recommendations that are being made by staff and the planning commission. And so, we also have final plat, the final plat public hearing coming up too. So planning commission still has to see that, and you will see that after that.
Okay. So, Barrett, did we have one of those that, it's either Plan A or Plan B is what we're getting at here right now?
Correct.
Do you have a recommendation on this that you would prefer?
We prefer B.
Okay. Then because of, just go ahead and explain why you put, why B over A then in your recommendation?
We chose B because new information became available that the parking demand was less than what was anticipated.
Can you, I don't know if this is, if, but there was some talk about the trees and the planting requirements?
Yeah, originally, one of the proposals was to remove the species requirement. The land use ordinance requires that, based on a certain number of planting, planting units that the species variation differed as the scale and the requirements of planting units went up. Initially, it was proposed to remove that requirement, but it's been since then been inserted back into the requirements that we will look for that species variation when we receive their building permit application.
Okay.
And, and so that is addressed in the PUD agreement under Section 4K. The planning commission just wanted at least three, three varieties. So it's just, it's a landscape plan must include a minimum of three different tree varieties. So that was their, their concern, is that variation was there, but now it's back in, just in case there is a tree that gets a disease.
Any other questions or comments from the public on this one? Otherwise, I'll close the public hearing. Going once, going twice. Okay, we'll close the public hearing.
Make a motion?
I think so. I mean, I...
I motion that we accept the suggestion you proposed, and it's either agreed.
Dave makes a motion?
Or reading Agnes, or whatever, or Stephen.
Yes, first, first reading.
I'll give you the job.
No, I'll, I'll go along with that. I'll second that. With Dave, I, I think the great thing about this is where it's located too. I, I think you're looking at peak hours of parking needed. There is other commercial area that the street can be parked on after hours. It's going to be business, because they're going to be done. So I think that it makes sense. If it was more in a residential area, it might be different, but I think this makes sense. And we can still go back and...
We can revisit it if we need to, but I think for what we're looking at, it's a good deal. So, with that, so Dave made a motion, John did a second. So, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. All right, Jim, you got number 10 here.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. The first item that I have for you tonight is Water, Sewer, Storm and Street Improvement District number 2020-4. This is for the Lost River Fifth Edition. There is a memo and petitions, Brian, for this one attachment. So, there you go. So Winnie Development Two has submitted a petition for public improvements to construct infrastructure in the Lost River Fifth Edition. This is adjacent to the Lost Rivers One, Two, Three, and Fourth additions. They would like this to be funded and constructed through a special, a special assessment improvement district. The improvements for this project will include water main and services, sanitary sewer mains and services, storm sewer, curb inlet, area inlet, associated pipe, associated piping, asphalt streets of curb and gutter, street lighting, storm sewer lift station modifications, storm sewer diversion inlet piping, and sidewalks and signage. The preliminary platforms have been reviewed by planning and zoning. Final plat approval awaits. For this project to move forward, we would, the city would need to first start by creating the resolution, creating the district, and then directing the engineer to prepare the engineering report and cost estimates. So, it's just a continuation of Lost Rivers additions, so.
Yeah, so, yeah, this has just been an ongoing event, so now we're starting to formalize it.
Starting to formalize it. The, the developer would like to get this on the, or at least bid out in March, March for construction this summer.
Okay.
So that means the district, the district.
We haven't, we haven't established the district boundary yet. Dave will do that once, once the meeting gets done. You're just creating the district, saying that the district has a boundary.
Fair enough. I'm just referencing that the document, that's what it is. It's all contained within that development. So it's clear it's not including anybody else's in the district.
Nope, just those guys. All right, so is anybody want to make a motion on the petition for improvements?
Someone.
Chelsea?
Second.
Give this a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. It's approved. Resolution to create the district. If there are any questions on that, again, it's a forming, formal proceedings here for that.
Well, for this one, Mr. Mayor, we do need the district boundary for creating the district.
Okay.
So we do, it's, when you're, when you're creating the district, you're creating the name of it, and then the district boundary. So we need that to create the district.
We got them.
So that's what that is, right?
Yeah.
It's not, it's not as formal. So why don't we table that one, and then we go to approving the, directing the engineer to prepare the report, and that'll be part of it. That's where I usually keep it, as part of the engineering report with the cost estimates. We identify the project location and the assessment district boundary at that time. That work for you?
Okay, yeah, so 10B then. So, yes, should we table B and C, or you want to just table B and we approve C?
My preference is to table it until you know what the district boundary is.
Let's do that.
Council decision, if you want, to direct the engineer to prepare the, the report.
Yeah, okay. That makes sense. So, table B then, if you want to go with C, or you want to table both B and C?
It's up to you. My, again, my recommendation is that you table it until you know what your, your boundary is going to be, but...
So, Jim, why don't we, why don't we just table it then?
That's fine. I'll have the boundary for you in two weeks.
Yep.
All right. So B and C are off the list?
Off the list, yeah. We'll table till next time around. Okay.
That won't, that won't affect the construction schedule, I guess. Jim, that, Jim delaying two weeks, that won't affect the construction schedule with that plan? Okay, all right. Thank you.
There's just a potential at your next meeting, you're going to approve more residences than you typically.
More stuff, right. We've done that before.
Yes.
All right, so on to 11. Jim, you got this one?
Yes. Water, Sewer, Storm and Street Improvement District 2020-3, Wall Avenue. A public input meeting was held last Thursday night. Approximately 50 people were in attendance. It was kind of an open house format for the beginning. We had some boards and stuff that people could come and look at, ask questions. Formal presentation was at 6:00. Like I said, about 50 people stayed for that presentation. A lot of the questions stemmed around costs. Number one. Number two was the assessment district boundary. We originally set that boundary up as a typical arterial street with a assessment district a half mile each direction of it. By doing it that way, the ironwood area and the chestnuts were all included in that district boundary, and there was some concern or some questioning from those residents as to why they were included in that district boundary. So, after some lengthy discussion with, with myself, and then the mayor, and a couple of council members, and administrator, consensus amongst the 50 people there was it should be a, excuse me, a citywide assessment, because it's a lot, a lot more people driving than just that, that half-mile course or so. That's one thing that we were going to bring up to you tonight, was for redrawing that to be a citywide assessment. If you recall, 76th Avenue and the Roundabout was determined to be a citywide assessment, just because this Cairo 17 does see a lot of traffic through the, from the course proper. So that was one question. And then, we had proposed alternatives to do it as a curb and gutter section, not curb and gutter section, concrete and asphalt. And one of the residents said she would like to see kind of a menu, something where they could pick from, put together the project. Well, we, we do that and provide the options. We did concrete, asphalt, urban, rural, et cetera. We were proposing a 10-foot shared-use path on the south side of the road. There was some more comments against that than I kind of thought that there would be. I assumed that there'd be a little bit more in favor of pedestrian facilities on Wall Avenue. I know that's a big concern for, for many people. But that was one that a lady stopped me after the meeting, and just had a strong comment on including a shared-use path on that.
Making it smaller, or not including it at all?
Not including. She said, "I don't mind it, but I don't want to pick from it," so.
Of course.
I know. So, we have given the residents till February 1st to provide comments. So next Saturday, they have that time to provide written comments to me. We did receive some from the meeting, the people filled out and left with us. I haven't received any email comments yet, and Brenton did make comment, or he did keep track of the comments that were brought forth by the residents at that meeting. So, he's got the summary of the list over there. We've got a sign-in sheet, so we have access to the people that came to that meeting.
So, what I would, for a summary of all the comments we get, once that period is closed, we'll have everything summarized for you, and really focus on the just, the captcha, or snapshot of what people are, what we're getting feedback-wise. Quite a few of the folks that did attend were not immediately on Wall Avenue. So they were not immediate stakeholders. They were in neighborhoods adjacent or in the assessment district. So that's why you're getting that feedback of why, you know, why are we being assessed, things like, why would we be obsessed, or why is this being discussed? That's why is because the, looking at the direct, we did follow a half-mile general rule of thumb each, or going north and south. So paying up from the road, that's a general approach. In regards to the special assessment district, and I know we talked a lot about that during the public meeting, the boundary of it, there are pros and cons, and you'll have to weigh those pros and cons. An obvious one is it does spread the cost out throughout the entire city. It is one of the main roads throughout the city. If you look at the main roads, really section-lined roads are your main ones, are your main arterials. Wall Avenue, 88th, 76th, 64th. And then also, you get into Cairo 17. Cairo 17, we don't have jurisdiction over, but sometimes we have projects on there, such as the Roundabout. If you do a citywide assessment, though, folks that are along Wall, for example, are paying for 64th when comes the time for 64. So, it, you'll have, you'll have people saying, "I don't benefit from 64th at that time, because they don't drive it." And vice versa with Wall at this time. That's when your pros and cons, you know, it'll spread the cost down, but you're going to see more special assessments where everybody is hit with those costs. That's a con.
But now the assessment district committee will decide the percentage benefit, so that that could still affect the actual percentage, you know, the perceived benefit for each of those outside areas, even if we do, do draw the boundaries at a much larger scale.
The other, the other challenge that you do have, and we'd have to have a very strong justification for it, is if you do a citywide assessment, how would the special assessment commission, how would the council, the city, how would you justify it? So if somebody is not, does not perceive to have a, a benefit, and they're being special assessed, how would you justify it, and how would that stand up if it was ever debated? So, that's something to keep in mind. When you get into the, doing a citywide assessment, you have to be very, very careful. What is being assessed citywide? Because it, it's a hard justification at times when you start getting farther and farther away. Somebody that's two miles, three miles away from that project location, it's more difficult to make your case. So it's just something to keep in mind. Staff, you could always do that bigger boundary, and as it reduces down, but at the same time, we have to keep that in mind of how you're going to justify it. So, I want to stress that and give you a chance to think about it. Like I said, that... Like I said, that, once we get all the comments back, we'll bring this up for discussion again, and ask council, do you want to revisit that boundary, do you want to keep it the same, what do you want to do? And then where, what steps forward, do you want to, you know, do you want to break this project up? Do we want to define our timeline or schedule a little bit more? We really tried to focus a lot on the project of, this is what it could entail, trying to get feedback from residents, what they would like to see, and then a timing of, could we break this into two years or one year, or how timeline would this work? That was the intent of the public meeting. Special assessments obviously dominated the conversation, but we did try to have a conversation about other elements. Or do we even phase different things like the bike path? You're going to get your best cost, most likely, by doing it all in one shot. You could come back and do a path later on, you might be able to apply for grant funding, but you don't know if that path would occur in five years, ten years, twenty years, it's hard to say. So it's a, something to keep in mind. One thing with that path is what it would give you is we'd have almost a, a complete connection from the Lost River Development all the way to the middle school. There would be one little segment from Cairo Seventeen and Wall intersection to Horse Elementary, that there really isn't a path, but we do have that little front road. That's, that'd be the only section after that project, if we do this path along that project, that wouldn't have the connectivity all the way. So it's, it's just something to keep in mind, what do you want in the community, what do the residents want? So, you said, we just wanted to recap the public meeting. If you had any thoughts you wanted to discuss about, we're, we're happy to discuss it. But I just want, we just, Jim and I, we were talking about this, and we want to just get your mind going, where are your thoughts at, so you have time to process it before the next council meeting.
One question is if we decide to change the district boundaries and then we need to hold another public input meeting to let, or send another letter to everyone that would be potentially affected? Because then you're changing the protest criteria.
And you don't, you don't kick off the protest period until you do the resolution necessity. So once you do that, then it starts the protest period, that's why we haven't done that protest, or we haven't brought that to council yet, is, so we had time to do public input. If we do need to have another public meeting, we can engage more interest.
We're just bumping up against, you know, our timeline for getting this project started in twenty twenty is, is running short.
And it might be a situation where you're facing of, can we really do the entire project in one year? Or do we tackle area of most need and then the rest of it the next year? So those are things that we're gonna have to consider, the council, you guys are gonna have that tough decision of, and gain from the public feedback, what do they want done? So.
So just for your, for your information, right now the assessment district contains about six hundred parcels, and if you go citywide, it goes to about eighteen hundred parcels, round numbers. The notification there jumps if you're doing individually.
Yep. Okay.
So no action tonight?
No, just discussion.
Talk about it.
Wanted to let everybody know we had that meeting and kind of recap what happened.
So the only question is if there, are we still accepting public input, so, anybody that's listening on Facebook or anything, if they do have input, to send that into the city in the next week?
Till the first, February one. Till February first.
Okay, alright, so they have two more weeks to get that done?
Yep.
Or less than a week, no?
Yep.
So when it cuts time for next meeting, that'll have passed, you'll have a report for us, a kind of consensus of what came out?
We'll have a summary for you, yeah.
Okay.
We give you a full, complete summary of what feedback we got.
And then kind of maybe a, like Jimmy said, a, a menu item of some cost to keep the ball going?
Yep.
Lucas, you have something you want to?
Just my two cents on, on the benefit received. I just don't know how you can make the argument for some of the residents in the city that they're driving benefit from Wall Avenue being improved if the improvement is only from County Seventeen or Cheyenne, County Seventeen to the west. So what, why are people in, in Visto's industrially using Wall Avenue in that direction? And so that's from a legal standpoint, if we are saying they derive the benefit, what is that benefit?
So you're talking, you're talking citywide, we did a citywide.
If you decide to citywide, I don't like it personally, I don't know how I could argue it, and so that's my two cents for the council.
But I think that's why we went initially with the standard procedure, they don't have a mile on each side.
Yeah, exactly.
Just stayed with that, so, I mean, I can understand where people are coming from, that, you know, hey, I live up in North Chesna, why am I getting a piece of this action? Well, you're not probably gonna get a hundred percent of the piece of action, but you're within proximity, you know? It's just kinda like, when you talk about, you know, I don't have kids in school anymore, right? But I'm still paying the taxes, it's a, it's kind of in that same, you, it's part of the improvement process, you're within the area. So it's just something we'll have to talk about that here if we go.
So even if you like mapped out the roads, the arterial roads that would be assessed for the entire community, being that there really hasn't been any work done, and in the next like ten years, they'll probably all be done. There's no argument there?
See, like, an easier thing for me is, let's say that you did all of Wall, so you did the west side and then you did the east side where it's actually going to the interstate. People are probably gonna use that because it's another way to get to the interstate, so then it's an easy argument, so people will use that at some point. But I just don't know, there's nothing to go to if you're going to the west.
So if you live in the heart of the city and you're driving all the veins out, you're gonna be, technically you could be assessed for every single vein versus somebody that lives on the edge, you know, they're still in the city, but they get assessed just for their little tiny road, you know? Like, how do you justify that, where you're kind of pricing somebody out of being able to sell their house because they're being assessed after assessed, because they have more options to use all the roads?
And that, and that's something that you as the policymakers, the decision makers have to decide. I'm looking at it as, I can make the argument for all those ones that you're driving or you're receiving benefit from this, because you probably will use this, for this one, I don't think I can make the argument. And so I get your point that, yes, someone could be hit with all these, and that's, that's unfortunate, that's not what anyone wants to see. But from a policy standpoint, that needs to come from, from you guys.
What about a portion of the project, say a shared, shared use path? That would go both ways down to a, a park area in Lost River?
This, this would, this project would connect up with the existing sidewalk that would get you to the parking lot.
So does a connected shared use path bring more people in, in the half mile? I, I, it's a stretch.
I'd say it's awful peanuts compared to the.
Well, then people are gonna use that big park, they're gonna drive on the road to get there too. I mean, yeah, it's a tough decision, because, you know, you have to look at your community as, as a collective, you know, as support for each other too in some ways.
And that's why it's being presented to you tonight, that's something to think about, because you have these different viewpoints from engineering, from legal, from the administrator.
And the residents.
And we want, we want to make sure you have time to process this. Something I also want to stress to you, keep in mind, this engagement approach that we're taking has not been done in horse before. So you're going to get more feedback, you're going to have to process that feedback a little bit differently probably than what you had before, because historically, when there's a project, it.
We just go through the motions.
You go through the motions, and we're not, we're trying not to do that, we're trying to get that feedback or give opportunity for folks to chime in and let us know.
This is, this is the first street job where we've done, when water and sewer jobs, we've done the public input. This is like the first street one, major street one that's gotten a lot.
I, I agree with Chelsea's comments about trying to be a community. I think that's fantastic, and that's the approach we need to go. We gotta keep in mind that we're still handcuffed up here with the assessment dis, with the assessment committee, and with, like Lucas says, with legality of how do we justify it, how do we explain it? So we are somewhat handcuffed a little bit to it.
That's why we'll have to have some more.
Just want to get digesting a little bit and then have the further conversation once we get all that public commentary back, so. Alright, Jimmy, anything else on that one, or proceed? Okay, thank you much, then we'll go on to water and sewer rates. Brent, what do you got?
Okay, what I have before you is.
Thanks for coming, guys.
Thank you. We had a just minute here.
Yep.
The supplies to everyone, right?
Sit down, Lucas.
Okay, I'll get, get started here again. What we have before you is a discussion about water and sewer rates. As you recall, about a month and a half ago, we talked about the other utility rates, forestry, vector, and solid waste. We do have some update, you know, during those discussions, reviewed vector, we're gonna have to do a rate increase, getting into ballpark, I believe it was two fifty. Forestry, where council left off was keep it the same. And solid waste was an increase, I believe it was around twenty-three dot, to be combined trash and recycle is twenty-three, right? I believe twenty-three, I didn't check my notes. What we'd be coming to you, we broke this up to now talk water and sewer, so you're not trying to process five different utilities all at one time. It could get really confusing, and we also want to make sure that you're dedicating, you're able to have a good conversation for each one. What you'll see, we're looking for is just like we did with those other utilities, have a discussion, have a common goal of, okay, here's the rate that we're looking at, here's why. I'll come back to council with a resolution, a resolution of fees, updating that, and that's where you would take action, where you'd be asked to take action on the utility rate. We could have more discussion on those rates at that time, but like I said, the resolution of fees is where you're going to be enacting a rate. What we've done in the past is when we've had a change in utility rates, we've given time to be able to communicate it, so our plan would be to communicate it, other, you know, different means that we've done before, like horse happenings, maybe a flyer or a summary of everything going on in the utility billing, our website, Facebook, you know, the different medias that we've been reaching out to the public for. But having a discussion and letting people know well in advance. You know, our goal would be roughly a two-month notice. Ideally, we'd like to implement these rates around April, May timeframe, that's what we're looking at. When we're talking water, I've discussed this quite a bit with council member Schmidt, and he's been writing numbers, looking at in-depth. For water, I'm not recommending any change to the cost per thousand gallons. That's where folks see the most fluctuation in their utility bill. That's where you'd see it from winter to summer, obviously, because they're using more water to run sprinklers, wire grass, Bosch-Acar, different things like that. Where time you're gonna see the most stable. The change would be, that we're recommending would be tied to the base. Currently, our base is twelve dollars. The reason for that increase that we're proposing to get you up, my suggestion would be be in the eighteen to twenty-dollar range. If you get to eighteen, it helps keep us in the black to where we could do some maintenance. Last year, what kept us afloat was, or being in the black, were two things. And as you probably recall, same thing with other, when we're going through our budget process. It was additional homes that we were very conservative on our number for. Last year, we had approximately seventy-five new homes. That's a big increase from the year before, which we were on forty-five new homes. This year, we're on tra, we're gonna probably fall in at a hundred twenty to a hundred fifty new homes. So that's what was a surplus, or a jump into our budget to help put us in the black. The other thing that helped us in the black was we didn't do a whole lot of maintenance. We didn't do a lot for water, we didn't add more gate valves, things like that. It was kept down to a minimum. Reason why, the water fund before was running in the red every year. So it's really hard to, we need to, we need to start building our fund balanced to where we could actually pay for these improvements and not have to rely on the general fund to transfer money over. We had to do that last year at the end of the twenty nineteen, or towards the end of twenty nineteen, as you remember, for solid waste. Solid waste was running low, so we had to have general fund help solid waste out last year's budget. So with eighteen dollars as a base from twelve, you should, we should be in a better position to be in the black. It would be an increase in maintenance a little bit, but that increase in maintenance costs cover things like what we went through this last weekend, and I'll recap that under my update, but like the water leak. There are other events that happened too, we had costs, it was not a cheap weekend. Giving you a ballpark, I'm guessing we probably put in, well, I'm guessing it'd be closer at ten grand range or better. Or higher, yeah, twenty, probably ten to twenty. I'm just giving you a rough number because I haven't seen the final dollars. But we had a crew, a contractor out there dealing with water leak all day, and from about nine AM, eight AM, nine AM till seven at night. So you think about the costs there, plus other issues. Those are maintenance costs we have to account for. Last year, we also got by fairly lucky, we didn't have as many water leaks as what we could have, knock on wood. So anyways, the proposal would be at eighteen. The other part of this is, and I'm gonna ask in a little bit, have a discussion about future water supply for horse. If we change our water supply origination point, you know, supplier. So right now, we have our own aquifer city horse, we do basic treatment and distribute it. If we change that source, i.e. going to Fargo or, or Caserole Water, that is supposed to be done through a vote from the users. So what I'd be looking for is just basically confirmation or direction, or direction from council for staff such as myself and Lucas and Jim, to be able to get the duck, gear ducks in row, get everything prepped for a vote from users. This would be the opportunity for users, we'll look at our options, lay out what is realistic. Can we connect to Caserole, can we connect to Fargo? Get a general idea what it will be, what it will entail, and then come back to council saying, okay, here's where your options are, this is what we propose as a vote, here's how the questions would be phrased, so you have opportunity to see that, and if we need to reward any questions or any, anything for that. But I'm looking for, you know, trying to make that step forward and get a decision from the public or from the council, where you want to go. We have a few options on water supply, it looks like we could treat our own, build our own treatment plant, Caserole. We're still looking into the feasibility of connecting Fargo or not. There's a handful of issue, or areas that could complicate that one. If we went like Caserole, it could be a quicker connection. If we do our own treatment, we're obviously gonna have to go through that building process, so. Just to have, just trying to keep it summarized for you. For sewer, oh, actually on water also, what we have on here is to increase the trailer court. Right now, it's based on a three thousand dollar flat, or three thousand gallon usage. Trailers typically use more than three thousand gallons. If we followed the same rate increase dollar-wise that we would for the rest of the users, that would bring them from twenty-one dollars to twenty-seven dollars. Keep in mind, they pay a flat fee, they don't pay per usage because there's not meters in majority of the trailers. But like I said, trailers typically use a little, they use more water than your average household. Average household is right around that three to four thousand gallons. Bigger family, obviously, bigger household, obviously you're gonna use more. To give you a comparison, like my family, we use about four to five thousand gallons. That gives you an idea of what folks would use. If there's a one or two people that live in the household. If there's a one or two people that live in the household, they'll probably use 2,000 to 3,000. On the higher end, if they use it. We have some people that maybe use about 1,000 gallons, but that's pretty rare. But 3,000 gallons is pretty low for a trailer. But if you wanted to keep the same dollar amount increased, that would be, it would bring them up from 21 to 27. So the base is 12 to 18. That's what we're recommending. When it comes to wastewater, our minimum, our base charge is 550. What we recommend is bring that up to $6.05. That's a 10% increase, but it gets your base up a little bit. Sewer or wastewater has the same challenges that water does. We haven't done a lot in maintenance. We do have areas that we need to pay attention to. Adam can attest to all the, and Jim, they can attest to all the challenges we have on the Chestnut neighborhood with the, with the lift station out there in Forest Main. We have challenges there frequently. We're going to have to do some improvements there. These rates don't put a lot towards capital improvements either. So I want to stress that. It's the, it's mainly covering the maintenance side, not capital improvements.
We're getting some, but not a lot.
Yeah, not a lot. But we're taking steps to get there.
We do need to build up a reserve. That's the key element of this, is that the rates need to go up to build up that reserve.
And that was a recommendation from the state too.
Yes, this is to help get us in good standing, better standing. And I, I don't even want to say good standing, get us in better standing with the state when it comes to applying for low interest loans or SRF loans through the state. That's a 2% loan through them for utility improvements, water and sewer. But we have to follow certain rules with them, such as having so much in reserves. In 2019 for the water fund, that really got us to where we could put some of that aside in reserve fund and get in compliance with the North Dakota Public Finance Authority for that fund, for that loan. That's just one loan that we're, that we've had right now, is the water meter loan. We have to have about 40, around $43,000, $45,000 set aside, just earmarked for that loan. Basically a loan payment for a year. So that's where cost per thousand gallons, right now, you pay, or as users pay $1.75 per thousand gallons. That is mere off-of-your-water usage. So if you have 4,000 gallons of water usage, you have 4,000 gallons of sewage. It balances out overall. Yeah, in the summer, folks would use more water than what goes in the sewer. But then there are times when folks have sump pumps running into the sewer. So the mentality is it kind of balances out. It isn't exact, but it balances out quite a bit. Bringing that $1.75 to 250. The reasoning behind that, obviously, we talked about a lot of that, but we also have a contract with Fargo to send sewage. We have that sewer line, SSL, to Fargo. And intentions are to start sending sewage to Fargo in April. That, once the fro, or the frost thaws out, that's when we'd start sending sewage their direction. They're going to charge us $3 per thousand gallons that we send to them. 250 is not going to cover everything. You could charge three. But obviously, with charging 250, we're going to keep some capacity in our lagoons and we keep some treatment going on in lagoons and send some to Fargo. It's a balancing act. We're not, like I said, we're not saying everything that way yet. When we have a future connection, then we could open the gates and send it that way. But it's a way to phase rate increases. So we cover our costs, but not do a drastic height in sewer. And sewer isn't, that isn't too drastic there. In regards to the trailer court, here in the middle of town, they pay a flat rate of 1075. It would increase to 1355. And that's based on the same, following the same model for water. Looking for feedback, I know I dunked a lot of information already at you. Like I said, this is why we break it up. But looking for feedback, like I said, I'm going off of, council member Schmidt and I have gone through this quite a bit. And he's ran numbers back and forth and I've been going off of what makes sense off of our budgeting wise and where we sit. I think these are all reasonable to keep us in the black. We have to keep in mind that we can't be right in the red on these utilities. And we've done that way too, or too much.
We've had enough conversations with the state to know that we can't do that anymore. That was, that happened in the past and that's, we can't do that anymore. So we've got to switch gears here and we want to try and graduate this up without the shock, but it's going to be coming.
The good news is we now have an enterprise fund budget that we didn't have before.
Yes.
So we, we've got that working where we can say, okay, here are the rates that are in place to be able to hit that budget number. So that's, that's the good news, that we can better, better justify the rationale for the rates because, you know, we've got the, the public works folks that are funded from these, from these accounts, but also the infrastructure and the reserve just needs to be maintained. And, and it just puts us, you know, in comparison to other cities. It puts us in that, you know, probably around 50% quartile in terms of rates for other cities. You know, and actually, for cities about our size, we're right, right at that rate for other cities about, you know, Lincoln and in those towns that are about our size.
Well, for those with these adjustments, if they've lived in their house for 20 years and paid Casserole water use all those years, hey, congratulations to everybody in town. They've had low rates for how many years? I'm sorry, the reality, it's not going to work. I'm sorry, but it's just.
Well, see, the other thing we run into too, is probably another explanation on this. We talk about the state, state water, revolving fund that they have. That's a 2%, okay? When you have large infrastructure issues like this, you apply it and hopefully you can get that money. If you go out in the wild, we're looking at four and a quarter. You know, when you're talking $10 million projects like this, that's a lot of difference in the interest that you have to pay. And I don't want to pay that if I don't have to. Nobody does.
So you said maybe looking up to Fargo is possibly to West Fargo?
We are looking at our option, well, West Fargo gets, West Fargo gets water from Fargo. So the only other two providers are Fargo and Casserole. However, there are complications. If we connect to Fargo, there might be a service area, kind of like a territory issue with Casserole. So that's why you can't say for sure that we would connect to Fargo or Casserole. It's, we're evaluating those boundary issues.
Well, inevitably, Casserole's going to be buying from Fargo down the line.
Yeah. But with water rates, service areas, once a service area is established, it's a really touchy subject. It's just like if Casserole was to try a service within Horace, there would have to be agreements between Horace and Casserole for them to be able to service and not have to filter through the city. Yeah.
Now, as far as, this is probably a dumb statement I'm good at, but I'm going to say it anyway. As far as the past, we've had a conversation about Casserole, new developments, being able to handle fire hydrants. That's got to factor in that we have to have fire hydrants in new developments. Can Casserole?
And that's why of the new.
New water tower.
And that would be just fine for anywhere in town.
Well, for now, for now, and that's, it depends on the growth around the city. It takes from the capacity of that tower. There are plans, a master plan for another tower closer to Hunter Avenue. So when the time comes, they would put one there too.
And I think that's where we got to look at.
The benefit is that we don't have to, they're going to, you know, put it in a charge to us versus us having to fork up and through.
It either one way. And there, and there may be opportunities for the city to work with another provider of water on, such as like another water tower, where we're partnering together. And we do, you know, those improvements to infrastructure, that's part of our diversion money is, that was the intention, is to help us with those different things. But we obviously want to leverage that, that funding as much as possible so we get the most bang for our buck. So we're trying to be very, very careful with what improvements that we do with those funds. So that way, we get the most out of it. But yes, you're correct.
Okay, do you guys want to talk about that?
No action right now. It's just a matter of.
Not, not on rates. I'm just looking for.
To digest.
I, I'm, and I'm looking for if, if it's a techno, are we on track? What are your thoughts towards this? Because when we come back with that resolution, you know, the whole point is to vet out a lot of these before you even see it. So if there's concerns, if you want to have time, obviously, if you want to have some time to think about it, that's great.
I think one of the things that probably would help right now, just for us, you know, just baseline stuff, if we had a little bit better, maybe on what the break, what our break-even point is on some of these right now. I know we're going to have incidental costs, I got that. But I mean, just if you talk about just general normal maintenance.
We can publish some of those, some of that information before the next meeting. Get some of that information.
Yeah, and it, it gives everybody an idea, okay, this is why these numbers were proposed. And I get that.
Yep. And we're, we could do that pretty easily.
That's what I figured. It's just, it's out there then. That's why we're coming, have to come up with these numbers. And that's why there are drastic rise from what they have been. Because we've been supplementing this, so we can't do that anymore.
So like Brenton said, we've been talking about this for, for years.
I know.
Be it not the water rate, be it the supply, be it what it may be. And we've been working on that through, through reporting and whatnot. But right now, we're trying to pinpoint what the city produces for water and bills for water. And part of that, yes, Adam, I know. Part of that is.
I was watching him.
I was too. Is the metering. And that's where we need to get some readers. We put new meters in all the houses. We put automated meters on all the houses so that they, more accurate meter readings can be taken. The one thing that needs to be done is there needs to be meter transmitters put on the wellhouse. So whenever the city, whenever staff drives around, public works drives around and takes meter readings for every house, they get the meter readings at the plant too. So we can justify, every month, the plant is going to have a dummy report that says this is how much went through the meters at the plant. This is how much the residents of Horace you build for. And that's what we're trying to kind of get a handle on, is how much water is actually being produced. When the original water study was brought forth and when it was, why it was brought forth was because of the allotment, how much water you could take out of the aquifer. Well, now we're finding that there was a spike, was it two years ago, Adam? It appears to be a spike two years ago and it's kind of moderating now where we might not be as close to that high end of the, or as close to the maximum amount of water that you can take from the reservoir. So it might slow that down. I mean, not necessarily slow it down, but it might not be as quick as needing to make a decision on that, the rates.
Well, especially if we've got, especially if we've got that many homes coming in, the assumption is that the demand for water production is going to increase. So therefore, you know, we're going to.
I mean, I don't know how well you see this.
But if we're not reading it correctly.
This is just my, my scribblings here, but the red line is the city of Horace and the blue here is the service area for new water. So any new subdivision outside of this light blue area is Casserole water.
Right.
So.
But there's some percentage of those homes that are going to be built are going to be within the city service area. So therefore, the assumption is that usage will go up. But if we're not actually producing as much as we, you know, are getting more conservative or are we fixing some of the leaks that have been happening in the system? That's, that's been a concern that I'm worried about is what are the leaks in the system? What is our water loss?
Yeah.
That is, there is a factor and we don't know what that is just yet.
Not to mention being billed for usage.
Right.
You use it, you get charged.
Well, that's my question, is you bring up a very valid point in, um, America that you're stating, but I'm going to ask you that. Why is it so hard for us to state this is what came through the water tower, came whatever and into our service area, and this is how much we build? So my question back to you is, why aren't we discussing right now getting that because our residents will want to know, why are you increasing my rates? Well, because we're consuming this, we can't tell them these types of things. How much is it to put some meters on these, whether it's on the tower, whether it's on your, on the plant, whatever? Let's get that going first.
Yeah, we did. We just replaced.
Did you? Okay.
Last month?
December 7th. Yeah.
Now you can state.
We just need to get.
Replace the meters of the water.
Just need to get the transmitters going.
Get the transmitters going.
Got a job for you, you want to record every half hour.
Okay, good. Glad, because that to me is.
As far as, part of the imaccuracy from some of the past reports is, was those meters.
Okay.
Because, I mean, there was, there was days that, I mean, we didn't notice it. But you start looking all over, we've been doing it. Once you look at it, it's like, oh, okay, well, that meter stuck for five days or it stuck for a week and then it's gone.
Well, don't we also, wouldn't we also want something in our water tower? I mean, don't you want multiple points of readings to understand?
Ideally, yes.
Good response, thank you, Brian.
Ideally, you'd have it all there so you can, you can figure out where leaks are happening.
You started somewhere, so.
Right, so we got to, we got to, now we've got the houses, all the metered. Now we're going to get the plant. And now if there's interim steps to help along the way, then yes, we'll look at that in the future. But we've got to have the money to be able to put those things in place.
Agreed.
And we need the reserve.
Number one, I would state is that what Corey stated is we have infrastructure projects related to our water system coming up. It's always been an ongoing, that people are not happy with the quality of, I'm just speaking in Horace. I'm happy with Casserole water. But that they're not happy with the water quality, those types of things, we have to do something. Just as you stated, the first thing staring us in the face is we need a long-term decision where our water's coming from. The initial, what you've just brought forward is an initial, short-term, get us in the black, get us going. But number one, we have to resolve this year, and I believe within the next six months or less, where is our future water coming from so we can start planning? Because it is not something we switch overnight and it could take upwards of a couple of years. Whether we have to improve the, the pipes that are there or replace pipes, or do whatever this is. This is a long-term project. And the further we wait and you're kicking this can down the road, you're going to have the same challenges that you have with water breaks and that kind of stuff. And we continually say we need all these water gate valves because people are like, why do you turn off half the city when the water main breaks? And all this, and we just, we need to make this decision and start moving on it. This is my feeling.
So, so one positive, as the city grows out, the connection to Casserole becomes that much easier. You're working into their system and their connection point. The proposed Lakeview addition, Lakeview first addition, kind of up in that Casey's area, there is 16-inch water main all around that, coming from, coming from the new tower. So that, I mean, that would make a logical place to connect, to be through there. And then you'd be on that new tower. So the wheels are, are going.
Yeah, it's just, let's make, versus us talking?
Yep.
Let's get the information quickly, precisely, and let's make a decision and move on. And I think that your starting point here with the rates are a good thing. And so what we're stating is, next meeting, right? You're bringing all these rates by next meeting because I think we need to get decisions made and move on because people need at least.
Our, our goal is to have, our goal is to have that presented to you.
And that would include everything from the vector we've talked about to water, to garbage, to all of them, right? Any resolution?
You would have it all in one resolution. That way, whenever we update fees, it's all right in front of you. You're not, we're not having to look all over the place to try and find what's our water fee? What's our, that's, so, yep. We update that resolution when we do the utilities, so, yep. But, but what we're looking for, like I said, is the, in regards to the vote from the fire, if you'd like us to pursue that, that's what we're looking for is, and I'm getting general feedback. Yes, you guys would like us to. But then Lucas and I and Jim.
I thought we had already done that before. Because that was, that was the line item on the capital improvement.
Not, not a vote. This is a vote to get, this is the, for us.
Do we need a resolution directly?
No. We're just looking for consensus from stat, or from you guys of, if this is what you're looking for, then Lucas, Jim and I, proper staff will get the information together. That might not be available for the February 3rd meeting, obviously. But as soon as we can, we'll have the information available for you to where you'll be able to see what options the users of the system have to vote for. So what our water supply options are, is it treat our own? Is it do this, do that? And give you a general idea where it would fall. How much is going to cost? Get the pros and cons, things like that. And so if, if you're, if you'd like us to move forward with that, we'll move forward with that and do that.
Go do it. Go do it.
Yep.
Is that a motion?
That's what I'm saying.
All right, make a motion.
Need a motion, that's why. A resolution, is it a motion, what do you need?
Just do, just do as a motion.
Okay, a motion that they move forward analyzing the options for water connection to present to the council.
Water supply connections.
Water supply and to our users.
Second.
Casey, Dave made a motion, Brian, in a second. All in favor, say aye. Get her done. All right.
Not to add more pressure to you, but can we see the rates? Not to add more pressure to you, but can we see the rates a few days before the meeting?
Yep.
I'll, I'll send out, I'll, I'll send out some, now, some spreadsheets for you.
All right, so we got through that, give me back on thirteen.
We are on thirteen.
Okay.
So we'll hit the high points of the spreadsheet first. So sanitary sewer improvement district, two thousand eighteen dash one, uh, that, that one, and then Maple Lakes are kind of linked together. We have, we're supposed to have a meeting last week with the developer, I believe it's probably gonna be this week or early next week to see what the progress going forward, what their plan is next week with Lakeview.
Yeah.
Okay, so next week, I'll have a better idea on that in the next, in, next meeting. Service, uh, that would be for two thousand eighteen dash one and Maple, Maple Lake Estates.
Maple Lakes.
They're kinda intertwined, the two. Um, service of sixty-fourth avenue sanitary sewer, this is for the horseshoe bend trailer park. I resolicited the pro, that project to government agencies with the, with the residents north of the river, those five houses along there with septic tanks in varying conditions. So I resolicited the agencies, we are put, planning on using federal funds for that project, so we have to solicit federal agencies for their comments. Reason I resolicited is we'd have to go underneath the Cheyenne River with a, with a sewer line. So in order to include those five properties north of there.
What are yours?
Yours.
Okay.
Yours. Yours and your neighbors. So, and then we'll, we'll keep pushing on that, probably March, March middle inning on that one. Southdale Farms, that one is twenty twenty, let me keep going here, nothing real there. Most of these projects are all on hold, so, um, we continue with eighty-first street plans and specifications, we continue with Southdale Farms plans and specifications. Um, and then now we'll have Lost River Fifth Edition on there too, so, um, not a lot to hit on that. The big thing, Brian, is the map. John and, and Dave, I think you've seen, John hasn't seen this before, but Dave, you've seen this before. It has been added, or I've added the, um, improvement district names. So when we kinda use this as a key to whenever we call something by name, this is the guide to that. So this map shows the two thousand and nineteen carryover projects, projects that were started in nineteen and not planned to be completed until twenty. As the red color and the yellow color is what we've got for planned projects in two thousand and twenty. So a very good graphical representation of a city under construction.
Yeah, but County Road seventeen will be used as-
Yes, the corridor, the corridors, the corridors are open.
And this is not everything.
And this is, this is the big one, this is what we know. We didn't keep, we didn't clutter it up with, with the little projects or the, the stuff that's been kinda dragging on and on and on. So I'll get this to you, Brian, you can get this on the website, and get it out there and go from there. But it's a, it's a good way of seeing that there's a lot of work, there's a lot going on, so.
So the one thing that I, I was looking, the sixty-third, there is some construction all the way to Wall Avenue here, right?
Nope, sixty-third is down, is down to eighty-first. Eighty-first Avenue is the south. Eighty-first is, uh, right about that, you see it right there, yep. And we've got that little stub out just to the, just to the south. Lakeview First Edition will kinda drive the sixty-third construction, if that goes with that or not, if it's a separate city project.
So this is sixty-third, no, this is sixty-third right here.
Yep, sixty-third is right there. And the reason there's that bulb out there is the school, the storm sewer pond for the schools there. That needs to get rip wrapped in the pumps and stuff, put into there, so.
Oh, looks good.
Sorry, uh, again, but, you know, you got horseshoe bend and Riverdale.
Oh, that's spelled wrong.
Why aren't we going all the way down south on the east side of the river and making a bigger project?
On the east side of the river, we have a storm, a lift station that is planned right behind the Riverdale. So in that area, we can't get further south with that. So this is the service area that that lift station will provide, and this is the area where we've gotten petitions for the improvement. So we would have to have another lift station south of sixty-fourth avenue to take those on.
And it would make sense to have a bigger lift station at sixty-fourth to encompass?
We, we don't have the depth.
Okay.
It's, it's a depth thing, it's not a capacity, it's gravity sewer. We're taking off septic tanks, trying to get to gravity sewer with a lift station, and we just stay flat, we come out of grades so fast.
So like, you're stating the Southdale Farms one, that one's sized for-
So Southdale Farms-
Size for areas on the other side of the road, more than just that initial, right?
So Southdale Farms lift station is gonna be kind of up in this part of the world, and that'll be sized for basically this.
There, okay.
We'll try to get as much as we can, the problem with the Southdale right there is there's a ridge. So we tend to, as we come up, the ground goes down. Somewhere there's a balancing point, and, and that's why it's not down in this part of the world for Southdale. It's up here, is to try to take as much of the section as we can, so.
So is that, that lift station, is it gonna take it north to sixty-fourth, or is it gonna take it west to-
We are working, we are, we are working with a developer on the future phases of Southdale to put is the force main into a right away, in the fu, a future right away. Probably back to seventeen into the force main to Deer Creek.
So it would come this way to the Deer Creek connection?
Yep.
Okay.
That is-
But then now would, that lift station will service this larger area?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, if you remember when we did the district boundary for that, we had identified the improvement district, which was basically Southdale Farms, and we had had the larger area
Right.
for the sanitary sewer improvements, for the sewer. And also north of there is, is the new school, is probably in here. So.
Yep. Cool. Thank you for doing that, it's good graphic.
Anything else, Jim?
It's all I had.
Got it. All right, Adam, you got thirteen eight here then, huh? Wait for it.
Brent, if everyone you two wanna take it? I'll, I'll start off, if you have detailed questions about, uh, this piece of equipment, Adam could answer any questions or what he goes through. Yeah, my public works staff go through.
How about, can I just?
Yep.
Why don't we just get to the point? Our current snow blowers are not of the capacity that we need for our city. Um, these guys have worked it as diligently as they can to get them, to use them to what they can have. We're having them extreme weather, winter, we want them to be, have the resources they need to efficiently and practically clear out the snow in our city. To me, the expense of seventeen thousand five hundred dollars is probably a drop in the bucket compared to the amount of time to save these guys. While it's snowing, getting it up then, and it's the largest, we asked them to get the largest one they could, or the tractor that they have, and that has done that. And to me, that's an excellent price, but we could be paying forty grand or more for a snow blower, so. I'd just like to make a motion to accept this and move on.
One, one thing, one thing I would like to, uh, stress is, this is, they have two, this model and a different one.
Get the one with the side blowers.
Yep.
The only, the only problem is, is really only two I know in existence for this year, there won't be any available until next year. If somebody bought this one today, I would have to go with comparable model, there is one down in the cities, but I would just gotta like be appropriate.
So it, it-
There, there's a very comparable model.
But it doesn't have the side shoots or whatever, right?
That one does not. It would be, it, it would actually be less money, if it's probably in fourteen-five range.
So here's the trick then, try and get this one, if you can't get this one, get the fourteen grand one.
Yep.
Done, all right.
So, so-
Dave made a motion.
Hold on.
Who's got the second?
Oh, it's either got a chute or a, oh, it's side.
So Dave, Dave, I would, what I'd recommend, he had seventeen-five for the actual blower. There are other parts, recommend twenty thousand, just do twenty, it's easy number, we'll fall, we anticipate to fall under it. But it, it allows us to buy the driveshaft and a few other parts for it to actually make it all happen.
An option that they, uh, allow the public works to purchase a blower with a cost of about, and additional parts like twenty there.
Twenty grand, okay. So I can make some, I think John got you there. Geez, John made a second, all right, we'll call it. John?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Done. Make it happen.
Call them tonight if you need to.
Yep. Leave a message.
I'll text them.
All right.
Dave, I was going to be about as brief as what you were there, but-
Ah, I'm sorry, I just couldn't do it.
All right.
Okay.
What do you got?
Uh, just a recap of the weekend, we had a water leak, obviously, on third.
Water leak, yeah, that's, that's a nice way of putting it.
It's a nice way of phrasing it. Uh, my understanding is it was a leak at the base of a fire hydrant. Uh, there's quite a bit of water loss, Adam is going through calculating exactly how much. But between that and the other issue that we haven't really advertised the whole lives, we had our water tower freeze on us. We were able to keep service throughout the area, um, by having our water pumps running and flushing the hydrant. That relieved the pressure in our water lines so that we could be running off our pumps. We had a crew come in from Sioux Falls area that specializes in water towers in order to thaw the water tower. They were successful in being able to get thawed out. Public Works staff has been flushing that tower up and down to break up any other ice buildup. Uh, but we're paying attention, we believe that these events were chain reaction of each other. Where we had the water leak and that caused the water tower to freeze by, we probably had some ice buildup already. I'm guessing it basically capped, where the ice slid down and capped it off, and next thing you know, the water tower was able to freeze a lot easier cause it was at a lower point on the tower. The cause of the water main break, I know I almost looked at it more, but it's really, the best way I could say it is, it was old. There was a lot of corrosion, a lot of eating up the pipes.
There was, there was nothing from a pressure change standpoint that could have triggered the break.
And, and these happen, these do happen, uh, when you, you know, water leaks, a lot of times, as those pipes get older and older, they're not gonna hold up forever. Uh, they rust through, no matter what people say, they're gonna get weak points in them.
These are the old cast iron lines, so that's where-
Yep, cast iron fittings, connections there. Uh, water was down from around eight thirty, I wanna say eight thirty, nine o'clock to about five thirty, six P M. Crews are out until about seven P M roughly. Uh, out in temperatures, we had Dirt Dynamics come in to do that repair. Uh, during that repair, when that was going on, uh, our public work staff was bouncing back and forth between that and the water tower issue. Uh, the water tower was, and snore removal, yes. Uh, the water tower was thawed out Sunday?
Monday.
Monday, yes, Monday, cause this all happened Sunday, the water leaked it, and then, uh, water tower thawed out Monday. Uh, I wanna say it was around four o'clock is when you called me saying that they were done. So, yep. But down around the Arrowood de, development on Liberty is where we were flushing the hydrant. So if you got any complaints, or if anybody was asking about excessive water, thinking there might be a leak, that's what was going on, is the guys were having that hydrant flushing. That way, we could help keep the pressure down and not blow up the rest of our system. Cause if they didn't do that, we would have a lot of other water leaks. Uh, they've been checking around to see if we have any others, haven't seen any. So we're thankful that we've gotten by with that, hopefully, knock on wood, fingers crossed, so. Anyways, very quick update for you there.
The only, only recommendation, I, I think it was, the, the one element that would be helped to mitigate it is, do we need to communicate out to residents that if they do notice a water issue, that they can report it? Uh, did, apparently the resident that it broke in front of their name, in their house, they didn't know who to call.
Yeah.
So that might be a mechanism where we need to communicate out to residents to say, if you notice that's, you know, the water is coming out where it's not supposed to be coming out, here's the number to call, or here's what to do, right? So it just maybe get some communication out, uh, to residents to remind them, hey, if this is what happened, here's the number to call. Especially in an after hour situation.
And they, they can even call nine-one-one, I mean, that's what it's all there for.
That's, that's the setting, setting the publication, or whether it's a Facebook post, or website, or whatever, just get something out there for people to go look up so they can say, oh, okay, this is who I should call, it's okay for me to call nine-one-one. Cause this technically isn't emergency, well, is it? You know, those people aren't quite sure what they can do. So it, it, it would be important for us to be able to set those expectations with residents.
The nice thing about our, the phone system that we updated last year is now if you call City Hall after hours, it says, is, if you have an emergency, press nine or whatever, whatever it is. And that'll transfer right to whichever one of us is on call.
Okay. Yep.
The other, the other thing though, using, I did call, I, cause I, somebody called me about the water coming out of Arrowood, and I texted him quick, and then I wanted to see if I could get just that call. And I went to Public Works and had a phone number, and the message still had Ben and you, so it's a different number, it said, here's your guys' cell phone.
We'll, we'll talk with her.
That one you're probably gonna have to look at.
Yep, yep, we'll be talking with the phone provider on it.
The shop phone or something.
Yep.
Voice message or something is, yeah, needs to be updated.
I know, I know it's worked in the, in the past, but when it, when it comes across to my phone, like after hours, it comes across the city hall, it doesn't come across an emergency.
I don't know if this is a different number, just missed it all or something, it's simple.
But we'll check, we'll check through the system, I know we talked about that, and we'll be reviewing their phone system on that, so.
Um, in terms of the communication, I think everybody did a, did a great job, um, and, uh, did, things were being sent out on Facebook, which seems to get the most usage or that type of stuff. Maybe the only thing would be, could we have like consistently number of hours or something between updates, just to give people an update? So like, if it's something like this occurs, then we know that, we give the communication you guys did, which was great and that kinda stuff. And then every four hours or three hours or something, just a quick, we're still working on it. We have an ETA, we don't have an ETA, we'll continue updating every so many hours, just to-
But I would say that's two, two, unless we're in a, you know, if it's a major meltdown, then we go to one.
But, yeah.
But for like this, I'd say it was two hours, you know, we just say, you can just say, we will update again at two o'clock.
Yeah.
If we do the new.
That makes sense.
Just, just that way people will know when you, when to expect the update, and we'll just keep doing that. Unless something happens in the meantime, then we'll put a broadcast on it.
And that the news slash does work pretty well, because then it pushes the text message and the email, you know, so again, it's part of that. People can be reminded to go sign up, sign up.
If you're signed up, then you look, you got it all three, I mean, you got the text, I got an email, and it's on the Facebook.
Another good reason to remind residents to sign up for those services to get notified. Yep, so, thank you, appreciate the work.
Yeah, good job.
That was a tremendous amount of work over a short period of time, especially in the middle of the freaking cold.
I, I told him he needs to get the-